Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Warren and West Morris Counties, I am pleased to welcome you to our virtual Candidates Forum for Chester Board of Education. My name is Megan Davis, and I am the Chair of the Warren and West Morris Counties League. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. Membership in the League is open to people 16 years and older of all gender identities and political affiliations. Elections and voting are core concerns for the League. The League is committed to providing fact-based information about issues and positions candidates take on those issues, to help voters make their own decisions and participate in the electoral process. The League envisions a democracy where everyone has the right, the knowledge, the confidence, and the opportunity to participate. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. With 100 years of experience, the League is one of America's oldest and most trusted civic organizations. Any use of the League name or footage from this forum in campaign materials or advertising of any kind, including internet, social media, cable, or television, is not authorized by the League of Women Voters. We encourage everyone to go to vote411.org, a one-stop site for information on all aspects of voting in New Jersey, with information about all candidates up and down the ballot. You can find the Warren and West Morris Counties League on Facebook and the New Jersey State League's website at l w v n j dot org. All forums conducted by New Jersey Leagues can be viewed on the New Jersey website and vote411.org. This forum is being livestreamed on the Warren and West Morris Counties League YouTube channel and will be available there for viewing afterwards. Future confirmed debates include the Morris County Commissioners on Tuesday, October 26th at 7:00 PM. That event will be co-hosted by the League of Women Voters of the Morristown area and will be livestreamed on their YouTube channel. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Nancy Hedinger. Nancy is a League-trained moderator who is not from this voting district. Nancy will introduce the candidates and outline the format for this evening. You're on mute, Nancy.
Here we go. Thank you, Megan. As agreed upon with the candidates, the format for this evening's program will be opening statements by each candidate, two minutes per candidate, and then we'll ask questions that were solicited from the public and the League, and that will be followed by closing statements, which will also be two minutes each. So I'd like to introduce our candidates. They are Sarah Schultz, Thomas G. Murphy, Dana Levens, Sarah Kalation, Simone Campbell, and John Barounis, who is unable to join us this evening. The candidates will give their opening statements in reverse alphabetical order, which is the order I just introduced them to. And why don't we start with Sarah Schultz?
Hello. Welcome and thank you for watching. I'm Sarah Schultz. I'm the mother of two young boys in the Chester School District, and my efforts are fully invested in the educational future of our youth. As a former business owner and entrepreneur, I built a company from the ground level and handled all aspects of operations. Negotiations, contracts, and budgets were a large part of my day-to-day efforts and operations. I've since sold my business and have become fully invested in an active volunteer within our schools. Through this, I have witnessed the positive outcomes that arise when we strengthen our parent-teacher bonds. Over the past year, I made the decision to run for the Board of Education, and I've done my due diligence. From attending the virtual board meetings over the winter to attending current in-person meetings, discussing the position with the president of the board, to having several meetings with Dr. Van Worn, I feel I am confident and ready to take on this new role. I look forward to answering these questions tonight. Many of these answers are my personal beliefs, but I also have the wherewithal to know that I'm a representative of the community, and I will not lose sight of the significance within this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thomas Murphy.
Thank you, Nancy. I'd like to start by thanking both you and by thanking the League of Women Voters for organizing this evening's forum. For over 100 years, your organization has worked to ensure that voters play a critical and central role in our democracy. And I think that's pretty much what the founders had in mind. So for all that you've done in this election, for all that you do in all elections, you have my respect and my gratitude. Also, just a quick thank you to all the folks who are tuning in tonight. I think real decisions, important decisions, are made by the folks who show up. So thank you for showing up and being a part of this as well. So first off, like Sarah, I'm a parent, a proud parent of three great kids in the Chester Public Schools. We transitioned into the public school system several years ago, and we've been absolutely thrilled by the quality of the education and the teachers in our schools. I think having so much skin in the game, like many parents and like our teachers, I have a strongly and deeply vested interest in the continued success of our outstanding schools. Next off, I'm a pediatrician. I hold board certifications in general pediatrics and in the field of neonatology. That's critical care for premature babies. I have specific expertise in child development, and I spend the better part of every day poring over data, weighing facts, and making incredibly tough decisions that ensure the well-being of children. And finally, I'm a pretty experienced leader. I've held leadership positions for most of my adult life, two deployments as an active-duty naval officer in support of our efforts in the Middle East after 9/11, chief resident and chief fellow at Brown University, where I helped to lead medical education programs in pediatrics and neonatology, and now the associate director of a large medical practice and the director of pediatric quality and safety at a large local children's hospital. I'm an active community volunteer. I serve as a coach and advisor for several local youth sports programs. And so I think to sum up those three qualifications, parent, pediatrician, and proven leader, make me a pretty unique candidate to serve on the Board of Education. Now so more than ever. So I sincerely appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I thank you all again for tuning in.
Thank you. Next, we have Dana Levens.
Hi. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this candidate forum and for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dana Levens, and I am running for the Board of Education. As a former early childhood education teacher and administrator and as a mom to two children in the Chester School District, it's an honor to be vying for a Board of Education position. Nearly every job I have held in my life has been working with children as a counselor, a coach, a teacher, and a director. I'm a dedicated and motivated member of our community, having coordinated multiple fundraising and community outreach initiatives with the organization I co-founded called the Chester Angels. I am also a constant and enthusiastic volunteer within our schools. I love being involved as a class mom each year, and I love supporting our teachers in any way that I can. The Chester School District is a wonderful setting for our children to learn and grow, and our teachers, faculty, administrators, nurses, support, janitorial, and office staff are all doing a fantastic job. I am in awe of the hard work and dedication that each staff member has devoted to carrying our community through the last nearly two years of the pandemic, and I'm proud to be a Chester mom. Running for a seat on the Board of Education is a natural progression for me as a continuation of my work and experience in education and as I move forward with my community outreach and volunteer work. Should I be elected, I would focus on enhancing parents' engagement opportunities because I believe that parents should have ample opportunities to engage in their child's educational experience. School board should be comprised of members with a mix of experience and knowledge who are motivated to consider the needs of every child as well as to represent the best interests of all, and that is exactly what I will bring to the Chester Board of Education. I am best suited for this role because I have the experience in education and administration, and I have proven that I am dedicated to making positive contributions to my community and to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Sarah Kalation. You're on mute.
Sorry, I'm here. Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this important forum to address the community tonight. My name is Sarah Kalation, and I'm a current member of the Chester Board of Education. Over the past three years, we have accomplished a great deal on behalf of Chester, mostly during an unprecedented time. We came together as a unified board to develop the Road Back Plan, which enabled Chester's schools to safely reopen full-time with lunch in January of 2021, one of only 77 schools out of 599 statewide that opened. This achievement was made possible by people who, although they may have differing views, came together for one reason: Chester's children. Second, after years without, the board worked together to devise a plan to install air conditioning at the Dickerson School without going over budget or incurring any additional cost to Chester's taxpayers. It has become politically popular these days to yell loudly and make demands. This approach does not reflect Chester or its values, and I cherish the way our school board works so well together, especially in the past year and a half during this period of uncertainty. We have listened to each other, sometimes disagreed, and then forged ahead with the solutions that we believe meet the needs of our children. But there is more to do. I'm so proud to be a member of the Chester School Board. I ask for your vote as I stand at the ready with energy, passion, and humility to serve another three years. In this election cycle, more than any other, when putting children first, experience matters. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Simone Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Simone Campbell, and I am running for a seat on the Chester Board of Education. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for being so accommodating and holding this forum tonight, and to the other candidates for being here. This is the most important opportunity we have to present our ideas to the voters. My family and I moved to Chester in the summer of 2018, wanting to move to a place that had great-rated schools. My children attend Black River Middle School. I would like to serve on Chester's Board of Education because I want to continue volunteering in the community I am raising my children in. I volunteered many hours in the beginning of 2021 helping the community of Chester get vaccinated. This endeavor helped our seniors, vulnerable adults, teachers, and others in the community and surrounding communities access vaccine appointments that were very hard to obtain. Coming together with virtual strangers with the common goal of helping our community helped secure over 1,000 appointments in six weeks' time. I am passionate about being involved in my children's education and the education of their peers. The current school board has done an amazing job so far in keeping Chester a competitive place for education. They implemented the Road Back Plan during the COVID-19 pandemic and got our kids back to school in January 2021 while other districts struggled. The current board works incredibly well together, and I would like to help continue their legacy for Chester's children. I feel my diverse background and professional career would be a great benefit to the school board. I was born in the Netherlands and immigrated to Canada as a young child, and then to the USA my senior year of high school, and continued my university education playing collegiate basketball. Eventually, I studied physical therapy in the Netherlands, and soon after began working for various pediatric clinics. Working for a nonprofit most of my career gave me a lot of insight and experience into managing budgets, state funding resources, grant writing, charitable donation allocation, and equipment needs for different children, 0 through 17 years of age. I'd like to bring this knowledge to the Chester Board of Education and help continue giving the children of Chester all the tools they need to excel and succeed in their school and in their community. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I have a statement from a sixth candidate, John Barounis, that I'm going to read, and I have to keep within the two minutes as well. "My apologies that I cannot take part in this Zoom debate as I have other functions that require my presence. My full comprehensive platform is on Facebook at John Barounis, B-A-R-O-U-N-I-S, for Chester Board of Education. My name is John Barounis, and I am running for Chester Board of Education. My family moved to Chester five years ago for several reasons. The most important by far was the top school district it possessed. Originally, I am from the diverse municipality of Queens, the son of an MTA worker dad and a schoolteacher mom. I'm a product of the NYC public school system from first grade all the way through Cooney's Top Business School, Baruch College, where I received a BBA. I have spent most of my adult life in the private sector. I have owned and operated 18 different brick-and-mortar businesses in the hospitality, real estate, and health club industries. I have more business experience than any present candidate or any current sitting board member. I am involved in all aspects of the businesses from concept, budgeting, estimating, forecasting, and design through the construction process, where I act as a general contractor on all my projects. I believe the wealth of knowledge that I have amassed over the years make me a great candidate where I can be a real asset to the board. My positions abbreviated as they must be. Budgets, it's essential that we fund our schools properly. I believe attracting and retaining the best and most caring teachers is essential to our school district. We must keep our teachers happy. Taxpayers must understand that their real estate values are in direct correlation to the quality of our school district. Nevertheless, 66% to 68% of our tax bill is allocated to the district. It is within..." I'm never going to finish this. "...that is within the top 10 of the state. Money needs to be spent, but needs to be spent responsibly. My experience in the business world has well-equipped me for this task. I believe in value and will never be a serious rubber stamper. Parental rights, I will always be a believer in parental rights, and parents should have a final say on what they want their children taught in the school. I will defend parents' rights to opt out of any curriculum that runs counter to the parents' belief system. Board transparency, I believe the board..." Okay. I'll finish that sentence. "...needs to be more transparent." So that is the statement from John Barounis. So now we move on to the question and answer portion of tonight's forum. And we'll start with the first question going to Sarah Schultz. "Other than having children in the public school system, what are the candidates' top three qualifications for performing their duties?"
Right. All right. During my first meeting with Dr. Van Worn, we specifically discussed, and the answer is being a collaborative team player. I couldn't agree more when we started discussing this. I'll also add the ability to listen objectively. My greater mission on the board is to be the collaborative voice of all the parents within the school district. This includes engaging the community and understanding the values within it. In the end, we must work together as a community, from our parents to the administration to the board members. Together, we can make this the best district, but it only occurs when we can all collaborate together. Another qualification I think is important is having experience with finance and business operations. As a former business owner, I have the skill sets for this. Businesses, they're similar to school districts, and they have a million moving parts. Given my experience, I do have the ability to adapt, and that brings a lot of value to the board. I also feel that having experience within the school district is a huge asset. Having spent time volunteering, I have a great pulse on our community and our school happenings. Thank you."
Thank you. Next, we have Thomas G. Murphy.
Thanks, Nancy. I think I alluded at the beginning a little bit to having some medical expertise, particularly in the field of pediatrics. And I think that sort of skill set, maybe now more than ever, is particularly beneficial to the Board of Education, not just in terms of infection prevention and thinking about things in the context of the pandemic that we're presently faced with, but also thinking about things like developmental issues that affect our children and trying to put into context particular issues as they relate to what children are capable of comprehending and understanding. Next, I'd say the leadership skills that I also mentioned early on, an ability to work at a leadership level to do things like put together the best mission and value statement for our organization and to really work to align whatever strategic goals we set around that mission and vision statement, and to do things like prioritize resource allocation in a very intentional and deliberate manner. And finally, and I think probably most importantly, would be skills as a team builder. So one of my areas of professional expertise is around building high-functioning medical teams, meaning how do you bring people from different backgrounds together? And how do you make sure everyone is able to contribute, to be heard, but also to stay on task towards whatever the ultimate goal is? I learned a lot of these skills in the military. I've led countless successful medical teams, and I now teach others how to work in that space and to lead teams of their own. And I think kind of in totality, those three things together are probably at least my specific qualifications for performing the duties on the board.
Thank you. Dana Levens, same question. Yes, Dana.
Sorry. Okay. So as I mentioned in my opening, I am a community outreach coordinator where we plan and organize various fundraising and outreach efforts to benefit the community members, community members and groups. And in that, I have to work with my other partners, and we have to collaborate together. And we come from all different viewpoints, and we have to, we come together and we decide on our efforts that we would like to go forth with and to include the community as well. So it really does benefit that I know how to work with people and reach out to the community. Also, I was previously of an early childhood and pre-K teacher. I was responsible for lesson planning and implementation and classroom management. I did that for several years. And then I was also an Early Childhood Education Center Director for quite a long time. The responsibilities were for all aspects of the business, including classroom management, budget maintenance, and strategic allocation of funds, as well as my favorite part, which was being a parent liaison, where I got to field various concerns about the student experience and build those relationships with my teacher partners and also the parents and the kids that we got to work with as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Kalation.
Thank you so much. So my top three qualifications, aside from having a sixth grader at Black River Middle School and a fifth grader at Bragg, I'm a current board member, doing this job, and I know what's required to do it well. I've spent 24 years in the architectural and interior design services industry, and that allows for a really unique perspective that really applies to all aspects of the board. One of the jokes about going to architecture school is you're sort of a jack-of-all-trades, and you really have to know how to work with people. You need to know how to manage things. You need to know how to be creative and problem-solve. And it really, it's a great education, and I loved going to school for it and working in the industry. And then I think the final qualification is I'm a caring individual, and I enjoy serving the community in this way. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Simone.
Hi. I'm a dedicated volunteer. I love helping people, and I love to help out my community. I enjoy working on positive solutions to help create change in people's lives. I felt helpless at home during the pandemic, even though I was busy helping my children learn. Volunteering to help our community get vaccinated created hope during a sad and helpless time. I work well with others. This was a common theme when playing basketball throughout my life. I played on various school teams, city teams, different leagues abroad and in university. I can come together with strangers of diverse backgrounds or professions and find solutions for problems that will better a group or a situation. And lastly, I have worked with children throughout my life on various levels, whether personal, as a physical therapist, a coach, a mentor, a friend, or a teacher. And I am confident in my education and experience that I can make changes that are always in the best interest of the child. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second question, the first person to answer will be Thomas Murphy. "As a school board member, how would you respond to public comments or input that may conflict with your personal point of view?"
I guess the simplest answer to how I'd respond to public comments or input that conflict with my personal point of view is quite openly. I'd hope, and frankly, I'd expect that in a free and democratic society, we'd hear all sorts of opinions. I've sworn two oaths in my life, one to provide the best possible care to my patients and the other to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. And freedom of speech and freedom of thought aren't just for people who agree with you. So I would expect and I would ensure open dialogue with the public. Pretty much all the best ideas I've ever heard in my life have come from other people, and we have to be open-minded. We have to be able to communicate. That is literally the only way that we can be sure that we're doing the very best for our students, whether it's in our decision-making or in keeping us on track and making sure that we're getting feedback all the time about whether we're meeting the needs of our students.
Thank you. Dana Levens.
Okay, thank you. So I agree. I believe that all viewpoints should be heard, respected, and valued. I think that being part of a board means working together and listening to each other and also listening to the community, hearing and from and considering all the views in the district, and to find a path forward that includes everyone. My point of view is my own, but being a school board member is, to me, about the collective and not the individual. So I think it would be important to all come together and really listen to the concerns that were coming from the outside and then work together on the inside to try and find a path forward.
Thank you. Sarah K., same question.
Yeah, so kind of piggybacking on what Tom and Dana already mentioned, being on the board, a lot of people might wonder, you know, is there any back and forth? And there is, and we do consider all viewpoints. And I think the bottom line is my personal opinions don't apply to this public, nonpartisan position. So we are here for everybody. We are here for all our students. And that's really as simple as it gets.
Okay, thank you. Simone Campbell.
Yeah, I agree with all the former speakers. My personal viewpoint will not get in the way of performing my duties as a member of the Chester Board of Education. I'm adamant about creating solutions and giving our children here in Chester a world-class public school education, and this is accomplished by the input of many to create a solution for all the children. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Sarah S. Schultz.
A job as a board member would be to listen to all the concerns from the public regarding our schools and to be their advocate, just like everyone said. There's always something that we can learn from this. If we're able to listen objectively, then we can come to the best conclusions. Personally, I feel that we need to listen first and be respectful. We have to be open-minded and encourage open communication. We should be reframing our disagreements and finding areas of commonality. From there, we can focus on building positive solutions for the students and our community.
Thank you. And now our third question, pretty current subject. Do you support mask-wearing in schools? And we'll start this time with Dana Levens.
This is an easy one. Yes. Yes, I support mask-wearing. It's a state mandate. So while I certainly hope that we see a time soon when we don't have to wear them, for right now, I absolutely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah K.
Yes. As a public school, we must follow the current guidance of the state. And so that's what we're doing. And to Dana's point, we all want masks to go away, and hopefully, they will soon. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Simone Campbell.
Yes, I support mask-wearing in schools. Hopefully not forever. Hopefully, this is gonna come to an end soon. I'm really happy that last year, in our school district, there was not one in-school transmission recorded, and we were able to have in-school learning while others had to return to virtual. And I believe that the masks played a big role in that.
Thank you. Sarah Schultz, Sarah S.
We're currently, I believe, in a Cali score moderate. During the times of higher scores and surges, I know we do need to practice these measures. We are in the state mandate of Governor Murphy, and until this is repealed, it's out of our hands, just like everyone said. Once he lifts this mandate, we can assess the facts and move forward accordingly as we need to have a plan to get us back to normalcy.
Thank you. And Thomas.
Thanks, Nancy. You know, I find that people often quote studies and data to make a particular point. And the truth is, you can find a study to prove pretty much anything you would like to. We've known this in medicine since long before COVID. The key skill isn't how do you use Google to find a paper that supports your opinion? It's how to look at the preponderance of the data to grade the quality of information and to come to a conclusion through careful analysis. That's what experts do. When I'm faced with a question outside of my expertise, I talk to people I know who have expertise. That's why I have six of the leading pediatric infectiousity specialists' phone numbers in my cell, and I talk to them often when issues come up. COVID affects children. Children can spread COVID. Some children get sick. Some kids get really sick. Vaccines work, and soda masks. Those are facts. I'm thrilled that our children... I'm thrilled that our kids are back in school. I'll do everything in my power to keep it that way. I, like everyone else, look forward to a day when masks are a thing of the past. For now, they're a reality. And so, so in, on that basis, I support masks in schools presently.
Thank you. Our next question. As an agent of the Board of Education, how specifically will you help provide equal access and opportunity to underrepresented students in our district? And we're gonna start with Sarah K this time.
Okay, thank you. All students have unique and special characteristics that guide how they learn. And we value all our children here in Chester and they all should have the same access to all opportunities. So we can continue to strengthen the programs that we currently provide through our generous PTO and Ed Foundation contributions. And the programs help those students who may be struggling and also help those who need more challenging work. We can also further provide and investigate the resources our teachers need to reach all of our children.
Thank you. Simone?
I believe every child that walks through the doors of Chester School should have equal access and opportunities to all the resources they require or may need. Spending many hours dedicated to helping my children study and learn and teaching others as well. I know that each child learns differently. Some are visual learners. Some need to write information down speedily. Some learn by listening. There are so many ways children absorb information and we need to make sure that our teachers have all the right resources to teach all these different ways of learning to our children in Chester.
Thank you. Sarah S.
It's imperative that we have educational equity. This typically works in conjunction with two factors, inclusion and fairness. Within the Chester School District, I feel Dr. Crown has provided us with exceptional programs. And being a parent of a child with an IP, I, I do see the value, endless value. It's an ongoing process and our district currently provides special education and English as a second language at all three schools. Programs that can't achieve and parental support groups of can do. And we also have the ESL Support Groups too for parents. I think these are just so valuable to our community. We need to continuously support these programs as they do provide that value within. We should ensure that our staff and administrators are properly trained at pointing students who might need these services as students are not always able to communicate clearly when they are struggling. Additionally, for the families who might require more support, we can consider a routine survey that would bring awareness to opportunities that might help those in need.
Thank you. Thomas, same question?
Nancy, I apologize. My, my connectivity went out for a little second when you were asking the question. So I think from the other candidates' answers, I, I know what the question is, but can you ask it again?
Sure. As an agent of the Board of Education, how specifically will you help provide equal access and opportunity to underrepresented students in our district?
Thanks Nancy. I, I think the answer to that question is, is sort of embedded in the question itself. So, underrepresented students are inherently in need of, of better representation. I, I don't know, frankly, what the board currently does to identify those who are underrepresented and to actively seek their feedback and seek the feedback of their families about how our schools are meeting their unique needs. I can't really tell you how to provide equal access and opportunity to someone else without first understanding what their specific barriers are. So I think really the, the only answer to that question is to make sure that we're checking in with those who are unrepresent, underrepresented, that we're doing it often and really allowing them to tell us where the gaps are so that we can partner together with our teachers and our principals and our board to really close those gaps for all students.
Thank you. Dana?
Yes, I'm gonna kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Murphy just said. I'll start off by saying that every student in our schools deserves the same opportunity and education, period. I think our district does a great job of ensuring that. Every child deserves representation and inclusion. I support any effort that continues to achieve that. Again, I think our district does a great job. I think going forward, something that would be very helpful is parent inclusion. I think that's happening now. I think reaching out more to parents and sort of fielding their concerns on things that might, they might feel are being underrepresented for themselves. I think teacher training and continuing education is a key part in that as well. You know, representation is not just about race or gender or personal attributes. It could be about abilities, learning habits, socioeconomic status, mental health. As an educator, I've worked with children from all walks and backstories. And so I really do understand that every child learns differently and they all deserve representation. So I see the importance in this. And I think there are lots of things that we could do as a board moving forward to improve on this and to really reach out to all of the families. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is somewhat related. Actually, not really. Do you support inclusion and diversity classes in our school? And the first question, the question goes to Sarah Schultz first.
I wholeheartedly support diversity and inclusion classes within our school. We should all foster acceptance of all individuals regardless of race, sexuality, or gender. Research does show that students who are well-versed in inclusion curriculum are more prepared for future success. It strengthens critical thinking and in turn provides academic success and outcomes.
Thank you. Dana Levin's, next question.
I definitely support diversity and inclusion. We are here in Chester, an increasingly diverse community. And we should strive for inclusion in all areas. Children of all backgrounds and personal attributes should be able to identify some aspect of themselves at some point in a lesson taught at school. Acceptance should be modeled and encouraged. And when things are presented in an age-appropriate way, children gain understanding and perspective that can continue to be built on. It's really important that our schools should be an inclusive environment for all of our children to learn and grow. I think that we're doing a fantastic job. And I think going forward, we can definitely incorporate even more things into our curriculum.
Thank you. Simone Campbell, do you think there should be diversity and inclusion classes in the district?
Yes, yes, and more yes. Yes, I support diversity and inclusion classes in schools. There are many benefits to this education as part of our children's curriculum. When students work together, they experience other perspectives and experiences from their peers not the same as themselves. It encourages creativity because students are learning outside of their own box. It prepares students to navigate one day in the outside world. Our connections to different people across the globe has significantly increased because of transportation and the internet. We can be in a different place amongst different cultures at the drop of a flight or at the push of a keyboard. School districts are getting children prepared to thrive, manage, and lead in a multicultural democracy and an information-based society. We are equipping our children to lead and be led by others who may not look like them or come from the same background, whether it's ethnic or socioeconomic. It prepares them for a world outside of Chester and this is something that we should embrace.
Thank you. Thomas?
Thank you. I, I, I'm sorry to, to disappoint the folks who are tuning in because my answer is gonna be a lot similar than the last, the last several answers. I wholeheartedly support inclusion and diversity in, in our classrooms in, in terms of teaching and education and opportunity for all the reasons that were really very well articulated, the developmental benefits, the, the importance in, in children understanding that they're part of a diverse and global community and country and world and learning how to be the very best citizens they can be in, in that world. I, I guess I'll, I'll take this question in maybe a, a little more of a provocative direction in, in that I think sometimes inclusion and diversity classes become sort of code for, for other concepts or ideas in education. I, I think sometimes people use these terms as a, as a synonym for unconscious bias training, as one example. I guess it's that some people think unconscious bias training in the context of schools means telling little kids all the different ways they're racist that they never, ever realized. Curriculum like that may exist, I don't know. I'm not aware of any study showing that those types of unconscious bias training programs are beneficial in young kids. I'm also not aware of any plan to bring a program like that into our school system currently. Diversity is one of the many things that makes our country great. Inclusion is a fundamental right. I think those are good things for our kids to learn and to know. To really answer the question about any specific inclusion or diversity class or any set curricula, we would really need to know way more specifics about what sort of class we're talking about. What is the content of that class? How well-studied is that class in achieving its aims and how developmentally appropriate it is? And I think those are where the critical conversations have to happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Sarah K. Same question.
My answer is also yes, that I support inclusion and diversity classes in our district. I want Chester to support, encourage, and hold proud all of our students. The world is so much bigger than our cute little community and there's so much out there for them to learn about. And it's only gonna help them as they get into high school and go on to college and then their first job to really have a better understanding of all the different kinds of people in the world and how we're all different. And thank God for that because it'd be so boring. So I am definitely on board with the idea to have those kinds of, you know, moments of education for our children.
Thank you. Okay, this next question is a few parts. So what is your top school budget priority? Why? How would you manage any budget cuts from declines in funding for our schools? So your top budget priority, why? And then how would you manage budget cuts to our schools? And the first person for this question is Dana Levin's.
Okay, so I think personally, one of the biggest, well, maybe the only positive thing that came out of our pandemic is realizing that outdoor spaces are super important to our kids, to all of us, but especially to our kids. I think increasing outdoor learning spaces throughout the district would be a huge priority. Taking class outdoors can reduce screen time. It would foster communication and relationship skills, social emotional wellness. I think get them outside, fresh air, freedom as much as possible. I just think more outside time would be extremely beneficial. And an added benefit will be that it encourages reading and writing and creative thinking and communication away from technology, which I think is a kind of a huge priority for us at this point. So that would be my main budget priority. As far as budget cuts go, I would say that personally, I would make it a priority to not cut any programs that affect our students' ability to learn. So perhaps cutting maybe a capital improvement project or something like that and putting that on the back burner, that would be more of a priority than cutting any program that would affect the student's ability to learn.
Thank you. Tom, Thomas, you're next in line for this question.
Thank you Nancy. I, I really think this is a question for our teachers and for our principals. I, I think they are on the front lines and their critical mission is to ensure that they are delivering an outstanding educational product each and every day to our students. But they're the subject matter experts, not the Board of Education. And so if elected, I, I'll ensure that we're having those sorts of conversations with our teachers, with our principals, that we're hearing from them what they perceive as the top school budget priorities because they really, I think, have the best perspective on where funds need to be directed and where we should be focusing our efforts. I will ask tough questions. I'll ensure that I understand what the rationale is for those strategic priorities. And I'll support them and I'll support our teachers and our principals in, in achieving those goals. I, I, I just, I'm a little reluctant as a Board of Education candidate to presume to know what the school's top budget priority is without having those conversations with our teachers and our principals.
Thank you. Sarah K.
So top budget priority for me is to just get back to the basics of our education. Building a little bit on what Dana had said. I have a friend that I run with and she was talking about a school in our area who has decided to hold all classes outside for the most part, it's a preschool. So it's a little bit different. But just that the idea that you can utilize some of the positives of this pandemic to really help our kids. I am concerned for our children about how much they're on their screens. And it's a great tool. I mean, we use Chromebooks. Everyone has Chromebooks in school and it's a wonderful tool. And it allows us to do a lot of great things and, and really reach out into the world and find all this amazing stuff to tell our kids about. But, you know, could we start to think a little bit more about utilizing some of our current spaces or some of our current areas and getting our children outside and really focusing on reading and writing, which can be a real creative outlet for a lot of kids. It can be a way to manage some social and emotional issues potentially or just get them kind of thinking outside the box for a moment or visiting some foreign land in a book that they might enjoy. As a current board member, we don't anticipate budget cuts. But if they were to become necessary, the education comes first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Schultz, same question.
Currently, I'd like to learn more about our COVID relief funding in terms of where the money was being allocated to. I'd love to, as Sarah and Dana said, I'd love to explore more outdoor learning options. I have discussed this with Dr. Van Ward and there's a lot of moving parts. I know we're Google Classroom heavy, so I know that was a concern, but I really think we could work outside the box and really figure out a better option, having art classes outside, having just more classes outside that we can offer outside. I have researched success stories outside school districts via greenschoolyards.org. There's a district in Maine that has 5,000 students over 15 campuses that are outdoor learning in Maine, which if they can do it in Maine, I think we could possibly do it in New Jersey. So it's just researching options like that. And it's gonna benefit our generations for years and years to come. In terms of budgetary constraints, I find these situations inspire innovation and creativity. Having created my own business from the ground level, I found that lack of funding, which happened quite a bit, forced me to find more efficient ways to achieve my goals. I see these challenges as a way to think outside of the box and I use this as a positive way of critical thinking. And I hope that can enhance my job on the board.
Thank you. I have so many more questions left, but it's 7:46. And if everybody gets their two-minute closing, we're gonna run out of time. So with that, I want to thank you for your thoughtful answers to the questions. And we'll move on to the closing statements. Told you it would go fast. So this time, we're gonna do them in alphabetical order and we'll start with Simone Campbell.
Okay. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. There are three open positions and eight candidates running. Five of us made sure to express ourselves to you, the voters. And it is evident that we all have our children's best interests at heart. I am proud to run alongside Sarah Kalashian, ballot position number five, and Dana Levin's, ballot position number seven. We connected together by running for the school board because we saw how like-minded we were in our beliefs for the best for Chester School District. On November 2nd, please vote for me, Simone Campbell, ballot position number four. I will work very hard, hard to collaborate with parents, teachers, administrators, and board members in making the best decisions for our children. I will make sure teachers have the resources they require to do the best job they can do to teach our children. I will work hard to ensure that coming to school in our district is a safe place for every child, no matter the circumstance. I will be an advocate for increased cybereducation and I will help run the budget in a measured way, coupled with enhancing Chester's children with innovative technology that will keep them competitive. Seeing my children excel is what drives me as a mom. Seeing their peers excel reiterates why we made the right choice in coming to Chester. I want what is best for them. I want Chester's children to have a meaningful and successful school experience so they will flourish and one day as adults, they can continue the legacy of the Chester School District by being one of the top districts in New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Kalashian.
Thank you. When I'm re-elected, I look forward to continuing working with our amazing administrators, teachers, and business office staff. As a board member, I checked my ego at the door. This is not about us. This is not about our politics. This is about our children. I helped create the Road Back Plan, which our children, put our children back into our school buildings. And I brought people together by working as part of a team of people who worked to strive towards a common goal, the betterment of our children and our district. With my next three-year term, I will put together a social media task force to address all the challenges social media puts onto our children. I will ensure continued focus on reading and writing so that our children have the necessary skills to achieve. everything we want them to in both high school and beyond. And it will provide the parents the access they need to continue to feel heard on behalf of their children. So when you're driving around town and you see those apple signs, remember, Simone, Dana, and I are ready to work together for our children. My name is Sarah Kalation, I'm ballot position number five, and I ask for you to vote for me on November 2nd. Thank you so much for tuning in tonight. We really appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Dana Levens.
I am.
Uh, we we can't hear you. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. I am running for the Chester Board of Education because I have long worked in education and volunteerism is close to my heart. I'm at a place in my life where I have the energy and time to dedicate myself to the board. I view myself as a lifelong learner and I believe in being a student at every stage of life. We can learn from every new experience, every question, and every answer. I believe in having conversations and listening and that a working group of well intentioned, pragmatic people can do great things together. I believe in our schools and in the public school experience. I always have. Every student deserves representation and the opportunity to excel. After moving to Chester, I co-founded the Chester Angels and we've had an enormous positive impact on some extraordinary members of our community such as teachers and law enforcement officers. I will bring to the board the same energy and passion that has made the Chester Angels a success. The select the candidates that will take a level headed, inclusive approach to working as part of the team. We must work together in a unified respectful way that will yield constructive conversation and positive results for all of Chester students. Simone, Sarah Kalation, and I are the candidates who will do that. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters and to the other candidates here tonight. My name is Dana Levens and I am ballot position number seven. Please vote for me on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas?
What a great night and a great forum. I'll I'll start as I began by thanking our hosts for bringing us together and by thanking all the viewers for taking the time to learn a little bit more about us. There are several complex and challenging issues facing our schools. Those issues require careful and thoughtful attention from individuals who have to weigh all sorts of data, some of it at times conflicting. Those issues must be considered in the context of what is developmentally appropriate for children of various abilities and ages. Most of all, those issues require analysis by individuals who are willing to separate personal opinions and feelings from facts. If elected, I'll ensure that the initiatives I endorse are aligned with these three core values. One, always deliver an outstanding educational experience for every student. Two, foster safe learning environments that facilitate optimal intellectual, physical, and social growth and development. And three, promote a culture of respect and tolerance and understanding. My personal and professional qualifications as a parent, a pediatrician, and a proven leader in our community are uniquely suited to this important responsibility. I view our school board as a nonpartisan entity. I will keep our educational efforts unbiased by any one opinion, point of view, or agenda. It's a huge world out there and it's made maybe a little bit smaller through technology. But I want my kids to learn about all of it. I want them to learn about different people, different cultures, different values, different ideas. I want them to learn different ways of thinking. I want them to weave all of those ideas and experiences and values together to grow up curious and creative and open minded. I want them to learn how to think, not what to think. And if elected, that's exactly what I'll focus on. I sincerely hope you'll consider voting for me in November. I sincerely thank you again for showing up to learn about us, the candidates. Like I said before, the real decisions, the important decisions are made by the folks who show up. And like all of you who tuned in tonight, I'm prepared to show up for our kids and our teachers and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And oops, I lost my place, I'm sorry. Uh, Sarah Schultz, sorry.
Thank you for taking the time to watch this forum. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for running this. Thank you to the candidates tonight. Uh, if you made it to this point, I think you're sincerely devoted to learning more about each and every single one of us and I commend you. You guys are the ones that are voting, so we appreciate your support. My campaign is dialogical, it's non-confrontational. I believe in listening to others and including those with different viewpoints. I believe this is the most important part of sitting at the table together. During these times, we have to collaborate. I want to work together and create the absolute best environment for our children and this stems from us as a community and from our board as well. I am really hopeful we can achieve this. I welcome any positive discussions and can be reached via my Facebook campaign at Sarah Schultz for Chester Board of Education 2021 or via email at schultzforboardofeducation@gmail.com. I truly appreciate your support. Please go out and vote on November 2nd. I'm tagline number three. Empowering Chester's children. I thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate your support and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Sarah. And I want to thank all of you candidates for um an excellent forum. There there were some difficult questions, we didn't get through all of them, but hopefully people will contact you and you'll have other opportunities to share your um positions. Uh, thank those of you who are viewing. You know that you'll be voting for three open seats, you have sixth grade candidates, I imagine, and um you have a choice to make on November 3rd. We want to remind voters that there are three ways you can vote in the upcoming general election. We want, um. First is vote by mail ballot. Registered voters can apply for a vote by mail ballot by following the instructions found at vote nj.gov or contacting your county clerk. Remember, vote by mail ballots cannot be returned to any early voting location or at any polling place for this election. Second way you can vote is in-person early voting. Let me just list my notes. This new option enables all registered voters to cast their ballot in person using a voting machine during a nine day period prior to Election Day. You can now choose to vote in person when it's most convenient for your schedule. In-person voting locations will be open Saturday, October 23rd, this Saturday through Sunday, October 31st. Hours will be Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. and Sunday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. No appointments are necessary. And lastly, you can vote at your polling place on Election Day. Vote in person at your polling place from 6 a.m. until 8 p.m. on Election Day, November 2nd. Go to vote411.org for voter registration information, early voting locations, polling place locations, and more. Again, I want to thank the League of Warren in West Morris Counties, Megan Davis, Kelly Shay, our timer. Um, the candidates and those of you viewers who've taken the time to become more informed about your candidates. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.